And John's here as well, okay?
He's online, Judge.
Okay, good morning, John. All right, so we're gonna get the mics on, test our system. We're on, we're on, okay, super. But let's, shall we wait for Commissioner Chesney though, or is he gonna join by?
It looks like we lost Commissioner Modas just now, maybe he's walking in.
Okay, give me just one sec. We didn't know if you were online, because we saw your name.
I was just gonna do that out of the office.
Yeah. Well, now we got a forum, so. Did anyone see Commissioner Chesney walk in? There he is, there he is, there he is. Good morning again. I know, it's nice.
There's no something really difficult there.
This is the best meeting of the year, it's the shortest.
Don't say that, that's what it turns into, one of the long ones.
Oh, okay. All right, so, having a good look at everybody being here, let's gavel us in. So, good morning, everybody. We are calling this meeting to order, and at this time, I'd ask you to rise for the invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flag. Mr. Chesney?
Thank you, Judge. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are so grateful for the season that we just went through to celebrate the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ, and we are so appreciative of being here today, and, Lord, we ask you to keep us all healthy, we ask you to be with those who are suffering from COVID and other diseases that are out there, we ask you to comfort their loved ones as they go through this difficult time, we ask you to continue to remind us why we are here to serve you and to serve those that we were elected to serve, we thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us, and we ask you to continue to grace us, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas one state under God. It is, and I actually hear a fan, but, okay. So, let me note for the record and for our clerk today, that it's December 30th, 2020, not quite, but almost, the last day of this calendar year, and we are in Commissioner's courtroom, third floor, Nuñez County Courthouse, 901 North Leopard, and the time for the clerk is 9:05 a.m., and I do certify that Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Modas, myself, Commissioner Chesney are present, I do not see Commissioner Gonzales, but I have a recollection that he is out of the community today, and so, we are four commissioners, three commissioners, one judge, and our partridge, partridge quorum has been established, that's exactly right.
We told you, Commissioner Vaughn, you were not done.
You know what, I think the jeez was you, because you said that, yeah. The truth is, I'm kinda grateful for it. One more time. So, I would like to do a safety briefing, even though there are few of us here, it is still vitally important, Rebecca is here to lead us in that safety briefing.
Hello? Oh, good. First, I want to say it's my privilege to be the last safety briefing of the year. Okay, good morning, Judge, commissioners and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, December 30th, is being held in the Nuñez County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is an extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom, and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. Participants CPR certified and attendance will be Melissa. And anyone else who wants to raise their hand, so that we can be aware that you do CPR. Okay, and, in the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse, and assemble in the parking lot across the street, it is important to stay together. Should there be a shelter, a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuñez County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. I would like to reinforce that if something, nowadays with all the tragedies happening, if something happens, please be sure to take the direction of the sheriff deputies. Our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. Our safety topic for the month of December is 2021 Safety on the Road. We are addressing what causes crashes, as well as the role vehicles, drivers, road systems, and technology play in creating safer roads, is how we eliminate preventable deaths on the road. Alcohol, speeding, when approaching any vehicles performing a service, move over or slow down to prevent unnecessary accidents. Wear your seat belts, and please avoid technology. And I want to wish everyone a safe and happy new year, thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm gonna add to our safety briefing today, I don't know how many people are listening inside our Nuñez County Courthouse, but we're experiencing a surge, you know, in our community with COVID-19 cases, and I would please ask that if you do not feel well, please do not come to work sick. It is so important to protect the services that we provide to our public for the administration of law and justice, it is absolutely critical, so, again, we're gonna ask you to do all those things that have kept us safe for so many months, wash your hands, wear your mask, and keep your social distance, but most importantly, stay home and take care of yourself if you are not well, do not come to work ill at all. If you find that you do need a test, Nuñez County provides probably the most robust testing schedule that I can see in South Texas, and so, there is a time for you to get a test, and then finally, if we, if you are called to have the opportunity to be vaccinated, I would also let you know that we are running our vaccinations at the Richard Borchard Fairgrounds, and if you qualify, if you're in the right phase, and we can, we will be sharing with you if you're in that right phase, but that's basically our health department folks, our folks that are doing testing and vaccination, emergency management, and of course, this would apply to many of our law enforcement who are involved with the transport, and of folks where COVID-19 could be an issue. We want to make sure that we can get your vaccine to you, so, just, this is our time to be aware about all those emails that we keep bombarding you with, I think it's really critical to our safety, so, thank you.
I would like to add, Judge, that don't let time make you come to work. If you don't have time, there's something, I'm sure, that everyone can do to help that, because it's better to have you not come than to come and be worried at the same time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, can someone check for me, if they're, Melissa, would you be so good, I don't see any public comment on the screen, but I do have a phone number I don't recognize, Tyner, so we'll look.
Yeah, I don't know who that is, Judge.
I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment in the audience today. Okay, how about online, will you raise your hand if you are participating with us virtually and you would like the opportunity to have your voice heard in public comment? I think we're good, Tyner.
Again, Judge, I don't know that we've identified the number ending in 312.
Okay, well, if they're just participants, welcome. For my part, I'm gonna, for public comment, I just wanna say again, oh, it's Commissioner Gonzales. Oh, is it? Oh, well, great, well, we need to log him in, thank you, Commissioner, we're gonna log you in as present and in all.
Morning, good morning.
Good morning, yeah, we wanna, I'm glad that, thank you, you recognized it, John. Well, as I was saying. Okay. Okay, well, I was just gonna say that as part of my public comment, I wanna welcome our newly elected Commissioner for Precinct One, Commissioner Hernandez, he's going to take office on January 1st, can't believe it, that's just right around the corner, a new year, and so, he will be participating here with us today, and also, we will see him back in court on January the 6th, and of course, we also have our newly elected county attorney, County Attorney Dorsey, we're excited to see you in your chair, although it's not quite the right one, but almost, and so, that also is exciting, and we'll be able to welcome you for the first time on January 6th, but as you've learned around here, be ready for anything, it could be January 2nd, but our first official meeting of the year is January 6th, so, we welcome you, it's wonderful to have you here on this last court of 2020. So, with that, Tyner, I think we can move on to regular agenda. Okay. On our regular agenda today are two items that found their way, really needing to be tackled before the end of the year. The first is discuss and consider rescinding the selection of Jacobs Engineering relating to engineering services for design specifications of Bob Hall Pier. Tyner, would you provide the background for this? It sounds like it's something negative, but this is a really important housekeeping in order to make sure our processes are correct.
As you may recall, last court, the motion and second was couched in terms of if this could possibly get in the way of FEMA reimbursement or anything related to that, well, we found out it did.
Or any grant, yeah.
Yeah, any grant or anything, and so, after consultation with everybody, we made the determination that the county attorney recommended, let's clean it up, let's rescind that action, and hopefully approve the next one.
Right, just as a matter of extra careful housekeeping, you know, these federal grants can be interpreted by, they can be subjective in their interpretation by whoever's administering or whoever's assigned to you, and we just did not want to have anybody come back and say, you know, that we could have been reimbursed but for our process.
Right, and Judge, that's where I brought that up before, because we got hammered a couple of times on that with Harvey, and we didn't want that to happen again, and I appreciate everybody, you know, checking on that, because I know there are some FEMA rules that if someone's involved with a certain part of this process, then they potentially can't be involved in the next part of this process, and if we, you know, don't do it the right way, then they won't reimburse us for it, it's really kind of a, again.
This is really just an extra precaution, I don't think personally.
It's ridiculous that we have to go through this.
It is, and I think Jacobs is already, they were already approved as far as our disaster processes go, but, again, in the interest of being extra careful, and hopefully to be able to be successful in receiving any federal grant, Commissioner, would you like to make that motion?
I would, to rescind, motion to rescind the Jacobs Engineering.
I'll second.
And then, just for discussion, just so that, if someone can articulate, if someone's here to do that, oh, Laura's on it, I'm sorry, if someone's here to articulate, just so the public understands this too, specifically, the reason we're doing this, Laura, is, I'll let you put it in better terms than I just put it, because I understand it, but I wanna make sure the public understands why we're doing this, this in no way, shape, or form slows down our progress on moving forward with the Bob Hall Pier, or, you know, anything that we're doing out there, and we want to make sure the public understands that.
And I think, you know, I think Michael could actually put it in terms as well.
Whoever, yeah, that's fine, whoever wants to.
Michael, you wanna take that question?
Can you repeat the question, I can barely hear.
I just want someone to explain, either you or Laura, why we're having to do, why we're having to do this, because I wanna make sure the public understands this is a technical thing that we have to do, that it has nothing to do with slowing, it won't slow down, it won't slow down the process at Bob Hall at all, but I just kinda want a little, just a small detailed understanding, so the public can understand why we're having to do this.
Right, so, our understanding in speaking with grants is that any work product that we utilize in the construction, in the work that's gonna be done at Bob Hall Pier, all needs to be according to the grant requirements, and those requirements call for any engineering work to be bid out under an RFQ process, and so, because we want to make sure that we adhere to that, we needed to rescind this particular award to Jacobs, so that we could move forward with item number two on the agenda to begin that process of the RFQ, but it does not slow down the work at all that we're proceeding on, it's actually the first step that we need to take, and so, that's why we're here today to accomplish this task, and I want to thank the judge for taking time to catch us one more time before the year was out, to address this matter in a timely fashion, and that's another thing that's helping us stay on track, so, thanks for that.
Thank you very much, that helps.
Yeah, and so, it's just a matter of being able to comprehensively take the RFQ, and you'll see it in the next agenda item, we'll talk about all of the different aspects of what that RFQ will entail, but, in this manner, even public input, which we don't think would ever be reimbursable, let's just go ahead and do it anyway, it's not gonna hurt us, and I think it makes certain that we've crossed, you know, every T and dotted every I, so, I've got a motion on the floor and a second, all those in favor of the rescission of Jacobs Engineering, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Oh, yes, Commissioner Gonzalez, she just, needs to hear you for the record.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Okay, now, okay.
Aye.
He voted for everybody, yeah.
Aye.
Is he, is he being funny?
No, I think there's.
Okay, so, number two is really where we're headed, which is the approve a finding for the method of procurement, and that is the RFQ process, which is appropriate for engineers, request for qualifications is what that stands for, for engineering services, and here's where we get everything we want, it's develop design plans and specifications for rebuilding Bob Hall Pier and including obtaining, managing, analyzing, public input regarding its rebuilding, authorizing the purchasing agent to publish a notice and adopt an order, delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee, and, you know, the only thing I thought when I saw this, is I wonder if the motion should be, Tyner, rebuilding Bob Hall Pier, and it's, you know, there's other things there, right?
Including the parking lot.
Right, in other words, the pier, to me, maybe is a location, it could be interpreted as a pier, I think we should be a little more specific, I'll let Commissioner Chesney chime in and maybe make that motion to add some language, and associated buildings, including fishing amenities, concession stand, and a parking lot.
Bob Hall and all, you know, all related amenities.
Facilities, amenities.
Is that broad enough? I guess we'll ask the county attorney.
Laura.
Does that sound broad enough? I don't know if she can.
Loud up, you're on mute, would you mind taking yourself on mute, off of mute, and giving us some guidance here?
Yes, the scope of work will identify what is the area of work that needs to be done by the construction side, and actually, in this situation, an RFQ, which is the qualifications and whether or not they have experience, so, really, I mean, you can go forward as is.
Okay, so, you're not bothered by just the words Bob Hall Pier, okay?
Right.
All right, thank you, fair enough.
So moved, according to the county attorney's maybe last recommendation for us, maybe, I don't know, I can tell, right?
Got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sentence.
I have a question, Judge.
Yes, sir?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the, what we're doing today, we're approving the size of Bob Hall and the floor of the pier and the parking lot, and everything else that goes with it?
Just the RFQ, it's really just the method of procurement, so, we're really just saying we wanna properly go and discover who the best person, best entity is to design all of Bob Hall Pier, right, and just so you know, it, yeah, and Michael will go ahead and take it from here once this court gives authority. Okay, thank you. All right. So, would that be an aye? Do you wanna double check with him? Well, let's do it again, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I got it. Okay, believe it or not, that is all that is on our agenda, I do think it was very important and symbolic to say, in the year that we were so affected from local disasters, state disasters, and national disasters, that in 2020, that very same year, we saw this county make and take actions that not only saw a vaccine, but also took actions to help us recover from our second disaster, which was Hurricane Hannah. I think by meeting here today, it allows Michael to get that RFQ prepared, we do need to take action on a delegating and evaluation authority to a selection, we do have to do that selection committee, so, Michael, would you like to make a recommendation there? Usually, you're on that selection committee, I'm on that selection committee, Tyner's on that selection committee, Commissioner Chesney, usually, we ask the precinct commissioner.
That'd be great.
Would that be great?
That'd be fantastic.
And, and just because I think it'd be wonderful, even though she hasn't taken office, County Attorney Dorsey, join us on this selection committee, we're about to embark in the most exciting project, probably of mine and your tenure, and, let's say we started it together.
Judge, and commissioners, it's wiser not to have the attorney general, I mean, the attorney, county attorney be participating in that, because basically, we are the lawyers, we're not policymakers, and that's why we've always been excluded, but we handle all the actual bidding process, making sure that everything is according to the statutes, I would not recommend that they be part of the selection committee.
Okay, but you've always been on part of our committees, you just maybe haven't voted?
Not in the committee, no.
Just as an advisor, Judge.
Yeah.
It's always, it helps, it actually gives us a little bit more strength to the committee to be able to go outside of the committee, and if a question comes up during the selection committee, I can go out, I could go out to Laura and ask her questions, and so, in that same manner, I'll be able to visit with Jenny and get those questions that we have, and then come back into the committee and provide those answers.
Okay, that's right, that's fine, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, for the process of, of.
I think that's why you had the most of the time, I don't think you can be a member of the committee, advise the committee, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we've always, because you're, yeah, I mean, you've always been there, it's just, you're not gonna be a voting member of the committee, you're just gonna be the advisor.
Correct.
Okay, well, then you are now renamed as the advisor to the committee. That'll be great. Look, the point is, is that, you said it perfectly, is that we're all part of a, everybody's expertise lends to the process, and we wanna make sure this process is perfect, because when you are, this particular project most likely will be funded by a, really, a conglomerate of different funds, it might have public funds, it might have private funds, and it certainly is gonna have grant funds, we hope, so, we wanna make sure that this process is perfect, so that's why we're doing it this way. And Tyner, you'll work with Michael and set some dates for our calendar for that. Michael, you wanna just tell the court what your timeline is? What are you thinking, I know you've already been working.
Yes, I believe it should be forthcoming, within the next probably week to two weeks, that we can have something out on the street.
That's great.
And then, we'll go through the normal process of advertising for two weeks, we'll convene the selection committee when we open the bids, and then, we'll come back for, discuss award, and also, the execution of that contract, and so, that total time period usually is right around 60 days, roughly. So, if we're, if we're starting here at the beginning of the year, then we could expect to be all wrapped up with the new contract sometime in early March.
So, I have heartburn over all of that right now, and that's why we didn't do it this way in the first place, so, we've gotta figure out a way, Louda and our new county attorney, we've gotta figure out a way where we can, I mean, that's just, that's a killer, that's a killer for about three reasons, number one, the public input piece of it, how can we get the public input piece started if we're gonna be 60 days out? Can that not be carved out on a direct select?
No. No, no, you have to, you have to follow the process, remember, otherwise, you may not get the funding.
Well, we are never gonna get it for, for public input.
So, we have to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Yeah, see, that's, that's why I didn't like this process to begin with, because, look, nobody's ever gonna pay you for direct input, the issue was, is whether that piece of it was attenuated to, this is where the better explanation is, is that if we were to take out the public input piece, and the public input contributed to the design, I suppose theoretically, in some bizarre world of some bureaucrat in DC, they could make a connection that your public input contributed to your design, and therefore, you know, you didn't go through the RFQ process, but.
I don't think the public input process is going to be an expensive part of this, I think the.
That's what I said, but they're saying that if we don't, that we can't start that till after 60 days.
We can't start public input until after 60 days?
Well, that's, that's assuming.
It's gonna take us some time to write, to start.
Yeah, hey, Michael, I'm actually very perplexed by this, let's go back to our timeline, if you get this on the streets, you need what, two weeks?
Judge!
Uh huh.
Laura, you're back on mute.
You're back on mute.
I'm muted, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This process, the RFQ, is only getting a list of eligible engineers, or professionals, and from that list is, will, you will decide whether or not, who you pick, that's at the point where you're gonna decide, you know, what method of procurement you're gonna do, whether it's gonna be a design only, or is it gonna be manager at risk, you know, the different methods, so, this, this one just really irons out a list of eligible and experienced engineers for your consideration.
Right, what I'm saying to you is, okay, I'm just letting the court know that if we do it.
And just.
If we, I know what the process is, we've done it about 100 times already, but the, the issue that I'm saying to you is, we need to come up with a better process, because the process that you're talking about is not going to fulfill the wishes of this court, which is to move expeditiously, we were going, we're going to miss, quite frankly, the CDBG mitigation application process for March 28th, we'll have absolutely no input at all, this is not good, so, what we need to do is get your RFQ on the streets, you get your qualifications, but in anticipation of getting it, it should take us all of about one day to go through the qualifications of these, of the groups that can work on this, on this type of project. More importantly, what we need is, we ought to be able to have the scope of work decided, I don't need to figure out what type of, how they're gonna build it, we need to get the public input piece done, that's the problem, the design bid, or design bid build, or manager at risk, that can all, I'm okay with that, the problem is, if you don't go out to the streets quickly with scope of work, we need to have our scope of work and our contract done, you should know what kinda contract, well, maybe on January 6th.
Basically, Judge, you already had some input from the public at the last meeting, where they came and the public comments gave you some input during the workshop time.
Oh, no, Laura, they'll have our Hyde, they want, they want to have six, there's, they want to do what they did at Cole Park, they want to have a online portal where they can put forth their ideas, upload their own designs, they wanna do it like Cole Park was done, they do not want three people or five people coming in here, they want it to be a complete process where people can take their ideas and articulate them online to us, that's how that's always been done when you have these major public projects.
Judge, can Scott, he wanted, he's trying to.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott. Go ahead, Scott.
I'm not sure what, but...
Is this on? Can y'all hear me?
No.
Okay. I think we're overcomplicating this. I mean, if you want to start getting public input right away, all we got to do is do what we did for our park master plans. We can do that internally and start with Survey Monkey. Get a list of questions, get it out there, get Connie to help us get it on our website, get that link listed. I think Survey Monkey costs a little money now, it's not expensive, and start soliciting that input from the public. That way, when we do get a RFQ decision, we've already got information, we can feed into the engineer.
Right. And that's not a problem, except for that Survey Monkey does not sort for you.
No.
It doesn't, trust me, we've...
Yeah, a lot of data we'd have to work through.
Look, I'm with you. I want, something is better than nothing, and I'm with you. I think we'll try that opportunity to just get what the rudimentary, but if you want to know what a first-class public input project looks like, look at Cole Park.
Yes.
That's how you do it right. And what's very helpful about that is that it not only helps you with your own design, it helps you with grants, you know? It shows you that you've got a public will to have, you know, great support. It's going to get complex when you start talking about, do I do a concrete parking lot, a sand parking lot, right? Or what kind of a concessionaire stand, what kind of fishing amenities, shade structure versus non-shade structure? And if you don't, we do not have the manpower here to sort through that kind of a thousand type of input.
But Judge, tell me what it is you're grappling with.
Do you still have a motion in the board? Is it the second motion?
No, we've already voted, I'm just, we're just...
Talking now.
Talking.
So, what is it, tell me what you're grappling with on this timeframe, so you're worried about?
Look, the way it's going to go here, you're not going to get anything done until summer. You're not going to get into design until summer, the way this, the way we have it here.
Because of the 60-day...
Look, all I'm saying is, we need to, it's more of a directive to, we have a, we have a method here, we might have to have a Bob Hall Pier timeline. I think that's what I think I would recommend that Michael produce for us, is let's get a timeline that really looks good, that we can, I mean, when do you want to go out for design, right? Because it takes a long time to get contracts done, scope of work done. We're going to have to take this on as a, as a major endeavor.
And let me just, some personal experience, when we were going through this on, after Harvey, with the RV park in Port Ransas, the hurdles that you had to go through to even be able to apply for FEMA were so overwhelming that we finally just said, look, we're going to try this on our own, because, and I'm not saying that's what we should do, because this is a big try, this on your own, that was a, you know, one and a half million dollar building, this is Lord much more than that. So, the hurdles that you have to go through for FEMA, they stink, but if you don't do them, then they're the first to knock you out, from what I've been told, so I don't know how to, I'm with you. I want to move on this as fast as I can, but...
Well, like I said, I'm, I did this out of an abundance of caution, but I never was for it, because I don't think that anything we've done has been improper, and in fact, for the record, we chose Jacobs Engineering in the beginning, based upon our emergency ability to do so, under FEMA guidelines, and we submitted their report to FEMA under a DSO. So, it's very strange that FEMA would have the ability to come back and say...
And that's what happened.
You can't choose them again, right?
And that's what happened when we were, I can't remember which project it was, Scott, but we had the same problem come up after Harvey, where we had hired...
It was Horace Caldwell Pier.
Yeah, we hired somebody.
We had to RFQ an engineer to inspect it, then we'd have to RFQ an engineer to take the inspector's report and figure out how to fix it. So, we just jumped out.
Right.
We got the same advice back then, just so you know.
Yeah, I think, I think our issue is, we've done the RFQ, and I'm in favor of that, because we want to see what's out there in the marketplace for qualifications, and that's where we will, and that's what we'll do. But what I'm saying, between, if we're going to wait, we need to start now deciding what method of procurement we want to use for this building of this pier. We really do. In other words, you don't have to run it, it can be run either simultaneously or very, very close in time.
It's just, it's...
You don't need to wait to figure out who you're going to select, to figure out what method of procurement, is what I'm saying. That's a policy decision we can make, we can do it simultaneously.
We can, it's just, and again, I agree with you, and I went through the same frustration in Harvey, because I kept getting told, what now you're getting told that's making you frustrated, so this isn't news to me, because I got, I got kicked in the head with it a couple of times back in '17, so, so, if there's, if it's, if someone's telling us wrong, and I don't mean the county attorney or anything like that, I'm all for skipping the steps that you're, that you're not, that you're frustrated with too, but if we skip them, then we take the risk...
No, 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 I'm not talking about skipping, I'm talking about figuring out how we're not going to wait.
Right. No, no, I get it.
In time. In other words, 60 days to then think about what scope we're going to use, or what method of procurement we're going to use to build, is too long.
Well, and maybe you and I and Michael or Laura, whoever, Jenny can sit down and, after the, you know, first of the year or tomorrow, I don't care, and start talking about this, to see how we do it, and outline that a little better for the court, because I'm all for however we can get this moving as fast as we can.
But, but look, Scott's got a good idea. On the public input piece of it, let's start with the rudimentary way of getting input, you know? We'll just, we'll create something to get us going, and we will use our boards, that's what they're for, right, to assist us. We'll use Coastal Parks Board, and we'll use our Bob Hall Pier Committee that we're going to form to help us go through that public input, and maybe we can even get something a little more sophisticated. In other words, we'll do our own Nwasis County public input, and then we'll use that to give it to the engineers at some point in the future, and let them decipher it, but I think if we're not careful here, you're going to find that your project will not go on, will not get started in the manner that you want. And my concern is, is that we have a March 28 deadline, okay? March 28 deadline for the second round of CDBG mitigation grant money. And my hope was, we could have an engineer ready to do some sort of a preliminary, we talk about shovel-ready projects? Well, you don't have to really have them perfectly designed, but you've got to have an engineer onboard to basically help you write those grants in a way that convinces the person allocating those monies that you have your act together. And if you're telling me 60 days, we'll miss that, and that's my only concern, but let's see what we can do. We've got to get it out in the streets. That's why every day matters, and we debated whether or not we should do this today, or wait till the 6th. Man, talk about gut instincts. This is, this is what we do, and I'll just ask for the court's patience. We may have to have a lot of meetings in order to facilitate getting, you know, making these decisions, but we do need to start thinking about method of, of, of build, what kind of build we're going to use here. Okay. And of course, you don't know what to choose unless you have a cost estimate, but we can, we do have that already, so... Well, are there any other questions at all? Okay, well, 2020 has proven to live up to frustration to the very end then, for us, but we are grateful that Michael will get going on the RFQ. And Michael, on the 6th of January, will you give us a report status update on where we are with that RFQ?
Sure, Judge.
Okay, sounds great.
We'll definitely give you an update and keep you abreast as we go through the whole situation. It is a lengthy process, it's not, it's not any fault necessarily of anyone at the county, as like Commissioner Chesney said, these requirements are hard and fast, and the timing of things, I have things that are prescribed to me by law that I have to advertise for two weeks, we'll need one day, the selection committee decision is going to take us not very long, and that's not the biggest time sync of this whole project. The biggest time sync is the two-week advertising period, and then, on two separate meetings, we'll have, we'll have an award, and then we'll need time to contract with whoever we award with, and come back for a second...
And that's what I'm, right. And that's what I'm saying, we can get ahead of the game.
Where it, depending on the timing of those meetings, and if we need to have a special meeting, if we're able to contract quickly with who is selected, that we might be able to save a matter of days, but it's not going to, it's not going to save us a ton of time. It's just, I've found over the years that it takes what it takes. Unfortunately, the timing may not line up perfectly with CDBG, but depending on who gets selected, there may be some, some time savings that can occur, kind of concurrently, while we're working on the project.
Yeah, and let me give you an example. Your scope of work, I bet it's not done yet, but we have program managers that can help design that scope of work, right now. That scope of work can be 100% done, and if we had a master services agreement, like we've been clamoring for, for engineering services, all you would be doing is putting that scope of work inside a master services agreement. And this is why, if we want to be innovative, if you want to catch up for the 10 years that we've been behind, there's only one way to do it, and that's get super organized, and the way to do that is through master services agreements, architectural, AIA, AIA agreements, that this court says, these are our agreements that we use. These are the standards in the country, and your scope of work changes. But if you're, and of course, you've got to go back and forth, because each project is unique, it's going to have some things that are unique, but let's, let's, let's make the processes exist, and let's work swiftly within those processes.
Correct.
And I think you can do it, I've seen you do it, so, and we'll work on the public input piece of it separately. We'll see how clever we can be. All right, there's no, thanks, Michael. Okay, well, there's no executive session today, and there's really no other business at hand, Tyner, that I can see on the agenda, and I would ask if there's any adjournments in memory of that we can handle, and I think Commissioner does have one. Commissioner Modis?
I have a couple, Judge. One is Petra Seis, and she is the mother to Ray Seis. Ray works in Public Works in Robstown.
Oh.
He handles the Calderon Building, the library, he comes in and cleans, fixes up our office there in Robstown as well. And so, he lost his mother, 98 years old. What a blessing, right, to be able to have her that long. So, she, she passed away on December 15th, and so, we hadn't been able to share that, but of course, our thoughts and prayers, condolences to Ray and to his family. Also, another one is Abel Steve Salinas, and he is the son-in-law to Lucy Gallegos, and Lucy works in our public, in our, I'm sorry, in our inland parks department, and he was only 47, and he's also a resident of Robstown, and so, our condolences to Lucy and to her family on the passing. And then, last night, my grandfather passed away, my dad's dead, my last living grandparents, so I really had a lot of time to spend with him, and I'll read the obituary when we meet fully next week. So, it's been a long few days and long few months that we've been taking care of him, and so...
Sorry for your loss, John.
Commissioner Vaughn, do you have any? Commissioner Chesney? Commissioner Gonzalez on the line, do you have any adjournments in memory of? Give him just a second, he's still on mute.
I'm sorry, I was muted, I don't have anybody.
Okay, well, I just want to express on behalf of the court and Nwasis County's extended family, John, our deepest condolences for the loss of your grandfather, and to all of the folks that you mentioned, and I was going to make sure that I had the right amount here, so let me pull it up, with yesterday's additional two deaths due to COVID-19, and of course, we'll get our final count, you know, tomorrow, on the 31st, but my goodness, now it's not showing up, but we have, I believe it was 544, but now it's not showing up on my iPad here. Melissa, do you happen to have it for, the number of deaths?
I don't have anybody.
544?
I don't have anybody.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. At any rate, we, we are, we're just very mindful that it's been a loss every day since, you know, since this entire pandemic began, and so, we dedicate this last court of the year to not only those that we have expressed our loss today, but those 544 souls and all their families. We wish them the peace of our Lord, will comfort them, and we ask that all of you remember all the families throughout the world that have lost family to COVID-19. So, we ring in the new year next week. We look forward to seeing you, please continue to be safe, enjoy the holiday over the weekend, and I cannot tell you how good it feels, I did not do a Christmas card, which is kind of a first for me, because it felt so good to say, "Happy 2021." And so, I think that our new year brings us new hope, a new resurgence, a new dedication. It's hard to believe we can push ourselves any harder, but here's the thing, dig deep, I know we can. So, I'll see you in the new year, and I'll see you at your swearing-in, you at your swearing-in. We're wishing you the very best. Thank you. We're adjourned at 9:48 a.m.